Welcome everyone to our October 17th City Council meeting. Do not adjust your television sets. I am not Mayor Marcus Stevenson. I don't think I could fit into his shirts. Because he's small, that's all. But we wish him well. He is out of town for a family event and we wish him safe travels back. And with that, our talented and knowledgeable recorder Rory, would you mind calling the role?
Yes, let's see. Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gettle.
Here.
Everybody else is excused.
Thank you.
I'd have gavel.
And for our Unified Police Department report, Chief Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Gettle and council. My report will be brief tonight. I do have a special guest that we invited and I'll introduce him at the end of my report. But I'm hoping you all got a chance to review the statistical reports that I put out for September. They did come a little bit later. Analyst was overseas enjoying a vacation, I believe through Greece and making us all jealous on Facebook, but she did get back and get that done. Just to highlight, we had 2,576 calls for service, 906 general offense reports. We wrote 660 citations in the city, 55 of those being warning citations, the remainder being penalty citations. If you look on the second page in the statistical report, I always balance our financials and you can see where we stand as far as how we're doing on budget. And we're within a half a percent of our, where we should be on budget, under budget, which is good. I want to mention that Lieutenant Malone this last weekend, I forwarded a watch command log, but they conducted a, they have a, UPD has a high-risk victims unit that our DEU unit helped with, but they will set up occasional operations throughout the valley where they try to come in contact with either prostitution, victims of human trafficking, and perhaps those that, you know, what we call their pimps are operating these people. And had a very successful interaction with quite a few folks where they offer services in lieu of arrest and try to, you know, give opportunity for some of these people to get out of the business. I was questioning on, you know, is Midvale the hub of that or any of our, what we call, you know, our no-tail motels down here? And no, this happens everywhere in the valley. It happens, it's, they've really, it's not like the old days where you, you know, you go drive down a street. Now you get on social media and you order anything from drugs to humans. So it's kind of a sad situation and these folks, we look for opportunity to come in contact and provide services that can perhaps give them an out if they are willing to do that. So that was a successful event. We've been extremely proactive thanks to Councilman Gettle's parking enforcement walks. We have, we actually had a couple of trailers and we've actually with this gentleman had issues in the past with similar parking trailers, unregistered, full of garbage, extended, you know, quite, quite out of our ordinance. So we, we did some ordinance enforcement with those trailers. He also continued to stay in the area and park and sleep in his vehicle and, you know, we just continued our, our contact with him. And we will continue to do so in the future. We've offered services to him, but he's chosen to just be what we call resource resistant. So we'll, we'll keep an eye out for him. Along with that, in that same area, there's a lot of other trailers, construction trailers. We're giving them a couple of extra days. You know, they're large trailers. We really don't want to hurt businesses that, you know, where they park, park those things. But we do want to give them adequate notice, especially as we come into winter when we start our winter parking enforcement. So been very proactive and it's not just the west side of the city. We're looking across the entire portion of the city, even up east. We did have our, the UPD Honor Guard give honor to Greg Wathen, who was our officer that passed away here recently. He was a Midvale officer for quite some time. UPD did provide an Honor Guard at his funeral services yesterday, and I understand that was well attended. Upcoming activities, I do want to mention this specifically for our firefighters, and I may have mentioned this already, this upcoming Saturday from 11 to 3 at the Mountain America Center or the, where they play soccer down on, on State Street. They have the chili cook-off and it's a great event. All, it all goes to the U of U burn camp, all the proceeds. They got a beer garden there and some of the best chili you'll ever taste. You get to vote on whose chili is the best. You can, you get a, I don't know if it's $10 or $20, but you get these little tickets and you could go to the different booths and you can vote on who has the best chili and who has the best booth. And UFA usually kicks everyone's booth butt. They really have a great, I think there's this chicken chili. They call it sultry poultry or something like that, but really interesting. I don't know if I voted for them for first place. They might've been second last year. There was a smoked chili. It was delicious. But I'd recommend you go to that. Should be a good day if you got a chance. We are going to have on the 28th, the following Saturday, which is the same day as our Halloween event on Main Street. But from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we will be having our semi-annual DEA drug prescription takeback, and that will be at the precinct. We typically get 30 or 40 pounds worth of unwanted prescription drugs and other items dropped off. And that's huge to get those out of people's cabinets. So we will look forward to that. We look forward to helping out with the trick or treat. And that concludes my report. Before I introduce my guest tonight, who has been honored with saying our pledge of allegiance when we're ready. Any questions for me? Can I get Sergeant Levin to come up? Want to introduce Sergeant Aaron Levin. He is, as you know, for the last three or four years, I've been trying to get a sergeant for our DEU unit. They're small but mighty. I'm going to let him do the talking and I'd, I'd like you to ask those hard questions to him. But in the short time he's been active in this city, he's done amazing work. A lot of it is not seen. He asked if he had to wear his Boy Scout uniform tonight and I said, no, just you're going to work afterwards. So one of the comments that Mayor Stevenson said when riding around with the sergeant is you kind of blend in, you kind of, you know, it's not really what I expected and the amount of unmarked units that are doing work in this city is amazing. So where, it's interesting where a lot of residents may not see us, we're there. Our detectives, all of them are unmarked, including our shelter resource officers. And there's a reason for it and happy to answer that question. But without any further ado, I introduce Sergeant Levin.
Hello, gorilla. I'm ready.
Anyone have questions? So how long have you been out and about there in Midvale now?
Since July 1st. So I came over yet when we got the spot open.
As soon as the fiscal year started, huh? That's funny. Do you have any, so we do hear that a lot from residents, you know. I don't see police out doing anything ever. Like, well, we know that's not true, but can you just fill us in? I know you can't go into much detail, just generally what you guys are doing out there.
Yeah, most, most of our work is proactive. So that's why we need to blend in. We're out watching crime occurring and the ones that are, are causing the crime and then we go make contact with them. It's not just criminals we're dealing with, everybody, right? Homeless, just normal citizens, everybody. But if we do run into somebody that, that we feel resources would help them more than jail, then that's what we try to get them.
Have you noticed one thing I've seen a lot on the Bingham Junction Boulevard, heading especially to the Jordan River Trail? There seem to be a lot of folks, you know, sometimes they're pushing carts. So you can tell they're experiencing homelessness or, or something like that. What's the best way for our community to, because you know, chief mentions, you know, it's not illegal to be homeless. It's not illegal to be out on the streets, but in those instances where someone is, I mean, you know, taking a shopping cart is not technically legal in and of itself. But for those people who seem to be experiencing something more than just, you know, I'm heading to the river for a hike. Is there anything that we can do as, you know, elected officials and just the general public? A number to call or what's the best way?
There actually is a sergeant over Shelter Resources. It's Sergeant Richardson, but we work hand in hand with him. We deal more on the criminal aspects of this, but we do run into that a lot, right? So there is a five man? Six, six man team that that's their job, right, is to deal with the shelter and, and to help the homeless try to find somewhere to go. Offer resources like the chief was saying, a lot of the times they don't want it, so.
And, you know, trying to be as diplomatic as possible, but there are some times you, you see and hear from our residents who say, you know, this person's clearly on drugs or something like that. And it doesn't take an expert to identify some folks that seem, you know, are going through something or the other.
Right.
You know, it's tough work and we're glad you guys are out there doing it and hopefully getting people the resources they need. And those who need to have a different approach, you know, we're glad you guys are out doing that as well.
Thank you.
Just real quick, while we got him here, we, the sergeant requested his crew be here and they're small but mighty. So I'm going to let him introduce his two detectives that work for him. I will tell you that the balance, even today, and this is Sergeant Levin's doing. He insists that they have a multi, where he gets the, the shelter resource officers and his officers all together. And today they had an intel meeting and they do it weekly. And yeah, there's a good balance and if they need help, we help them or vice versa. So don't be shy. Step up here.
So this is Detective Olson and Detective Littier. So every night us three are working together. We do everything together. So we love each other and we hate each other. As you can imagine, because we spend a lot of time, these two hate each other a lot. They're like step brothers, but.
Is that why you're in between them?
Right. That's why I'm standing in between them. But no, this is, this is, these are the workers. These are the guys. Last week we were able to hit a hotel room with a supplier and he had 300 fentanyl pills and a gun. So those, those are the kind we like to take, take away and, and look at hard times, so.
They don't get to go to the shelter.
No, they don't, they don't, yeah. No, no, no resources, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys for all your work.
And I think, would you like the sergeant to stay up here?
Yeah, absolutely. Talking to the chief this week, we thought it would be nice to have our new sergeant, Levin, to help us with the pledge of allegiance. If you wouldn't mind.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, chief, and thanks sergeant. Next up, we have a breast cancer awareness proclamation. Many of you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I tried to find the shirt of mine that has the most pink and I think I succeeded. So our proclamation says, whereas breast cancer awareness began in 1985 as a week-long awareness campaign by the American Cancer Society in partnership with the Imperial Chemical Industries. It eventually extended to a month-long event and whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month aims to promote screening and prevention of the disease, which is one of the most commonly diagnosed cancers among women in the United States, with nearly 300,000 women who will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And whereas black women are most likely to die from breast cancer than women of any other racial or ethnic group. And whereas an estimated 2,700 men in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year and more than 500 will die from the disease. And whereas it is vital that those affected by breast cancer have access to quality, affordable care and that research of all forms of breast cancer continues to be vigorously supported. And whereas by educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life for all Americans affected by breast cancer and one day defeat this terrible disease. And whereas we wish to honor those who have, who we have lost, offer strength to those who continue to live with breast cancer and work to protect the health of future generations. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our mothers, daughters, sisters and friends and recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, researchers and healthcare providers, whose care and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Mayor Marcus Stevenson and the City Council of Midvale City hereby proclaim and recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, adopted on this 17th day of October 2023. Moving on, we have public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address City Council at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Try to limit comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure this is not on the agenda. I want to state that I am against the community center redevelopment.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to council reports and first up is Councilmember Heidi Robinson.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul Glover is not here tonight and I'm assuming that means he's somewhere exotic or tropical. Councilmember Dustin Gettle, that's me. Wanted to thank UPD, as chief mentioned, there was a lot of pink tagging of vehicles in my district. And I know sometimes that might make us a little concerned or frightened that what our residents might say. But when I tell you that some of these, you know, just huge commercial trailers and, and big rigs parked where they know by now that they shouldn't be, it really does, you know, especially the, the gentleman the chief was mentioning, who, you know, was taking junk from places, storing it in his vehicle and then just, you know, living on the street. You know, it's no fault of his own to be in that situation, but you know, we just need to keep our streets as clean and walkable as possible. So we appreciate that cleanup that occurred, I think, Sunday, Monday in that timeframe. Appreciate it. I did want to mention too, the Jordan River Trail right at 7800 and that the rooftop townhomes, that trail is closed starting yesterday. Will be closed until mid-December. I believe that's for the docking project that is going on at the Jordan River Trail. I didn't notice, maybe Laura already did, if we could get a notice out for that. How you doing? She's doing it right now. Look at that. Telepathy. I love it. But yeah, other than that, there are ways to, you know, you can still get from one side to the other. You just have to be a little bit more creative about getting there. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Councilmember Quinn Sperry.
I have nothing.
Thank you. And Councilmember Bryant Brown is not here tonight. He might be listening if he is. Or if he isn't, we wish him a speedy recovery from surgery that he had, which I probably maybe shouldn't mention. But I think all of us know that that occurred.
Strike that from the right.
Yeah, so we wish him a speedy recovery and a quick return back to us. Moving on, along the agenda, City Manager report, City Manager Matt Dahl.
I have nothing this evening.
I'm sorry, was that a, is that a mistake? Nothing at all. Okay. All right, well, we can move into our public hearing at this point then. We have a public hearing tonight to receive comments and take action on amendments to the Midvale Municipal Code regarding development agreements. And for that, we have Von Deline, not Block. Von Deline. That's my best high school German. That's my best high school German.
So Mayor and members of the city council, you've heard about this item before, um, the city attorney had a session with you that explained some aspects of changes in the state law that impact the city's ability to use development agreements. And um what we have here is one aspect of that, and that is that um the state law has changed and with that change, um, we cannot use development agreements when our municipal code um already has regulations that uh establish all the applicable standards for development. And um as you saw in the packets, um, there are several sections in our code where that applies, they, you could say, if you look for a pattern, these sections are always related to large-scale developments, to master plans, and basically the state law says we can't do that, so therefore, um, this proposed amendment strikes those sections from our code. And I have said, um, in the presentation here, it's attachment A, C, F, G, and H. These are all basically, this is um proposed amendment, those sections in the code are struck and with that we can require um development agreements and with that we would be in compliance with state law. There is one complication to this a little bit, and that is that we have some master development agreements that, you know, exist and some of our zones are based on those, they're pretty much intertwined. And in those cases, um, the language in the municipal code is proposed to be changed and um, you know, the city attorney may say a few things about that, but this is again, it's due to the changes in the state law and um the language was fine-tuned just a little bit to make sure that there aren't any um, you know, negative repercussions on the existing agreements.
So this is a little bit unique in the sense that the planning commission, the ordinance that they reviewed is not the same as the ordinance that you're reviewing tonight. So between the planning commission meeting and this meeting, um, while we were working on a related project, we came across an issue and realized that the changes we were planning on making um at the planning commission level or with the ordinance that was proposed at the planning commission level would have some knock-on effects that were unintended with the master development agreements. And so what we've done is changed the language, kept the existing language because it's integral to those development agreements and then just limited it to the term of that master, those master development agreements, so that way we can comply with state law. So we're obligated currently contractually to kind of maintain that existing code and that existing structure. Um, and then if those development agreements either expire or for whatever reason terminate, that language will also immediately die, um, so that way we'll be in compliance with state code.
Thank you. Um, with that, do you have any questions?
Uh, would this need to be re-reviewed by the planning commission or are we bypassing them?
Um, we are bypassing them. Um, we discussed this um quite thoroughly internally and determined that really the spirit of this has stayed the same. It was, I mean, you could say a technical aspect that changed and that's why the language changed.
That makes sense. So then we, um, in the past, uh, we've sometimes been able to use a development agreement to our advantage when a faction of the community was not liking a certain um proposed element of a of a development. Um, so unfortunately, we won't be able to do that anymore. That's unfortunate, but.
So yes and no. Um, in, like Vandeline explained, in certain zones where we have the adequate um structure in place that all of the regulations are present in order to perform development, those have been completely removed in accordance with state law. And so it would only be if someone is seeking a rezone, a text amendment, something along those lines, that there's an opportunity to do a development agreement.
Okay.
Again, it's this same code, it's this same law though, that has um significant risk for the city to do that. And so as we previously discussed, while it's an option, it's one that I would not currently recommend.
Okay.
Um, we should also treat those development agreements with Bingham Junction and Jordan Bluffs more as an administrative type of decision where um if it's approved under our existing code, um, we should, we should essentially be formalizing these agreements with those standards.
On that note, real quick, is is that something that that is then gonna take a significant amount of work from the planning and zoning commission? Is, or is that something that they see once in a while and not very often or how's that gonna go?
I mean, I I would say this shouldn't take that much work on their end, really.
They don't see the development agreements, that only comes to you as a council because it's a legislative decision.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's kind of like a a net neutral then with this, like some good, some bad from it. Um, okay, we do have, this is a public hearing, um, if anyone would like to make a motion to enter into public comment.
Move that we go into a public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say yes or aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed? We are here for public comment, if there is any. I only see faces from Midvale City Hall, so I'm assuming there is no public comment. Um, would anyone like to make a motion to close public comment?
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Or public comment.
Yeah, we are closed to public comment. This is an action item today and if anyone would like to make that motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-three dash O dash one four provided in Exhibit A with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second. Motion and a second, uh Rory, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Uh, Robinson.
Aye.
And Gettle.
Yes. And that passes, three zero. Uh, moving right along, we are um to consider our consent agenda, consider the minutes of October third, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you both, motion and a second, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Mayor Proton.
Oh, roll call, thank you.
Roll call, sorry.
I even asked her about this before we walked in here. Roll call.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
And Gettle.
Yes.
And Sperry.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Rory.
Yes.
Moving on to our discussion item, city manager Matt Doll has a city committees' policy discussion for us.
I'll do it off the panel.
Are you winging it?
Um, sorry, uh, the uh PowerPoint appears to have gotten put, not Josh's fault, got put in the wrong spot, so I'll uh, I'll do it without. Um, section two-point-two-four of city code uh is related to city committees. And while there's some variance in there, in large part, what it does is it establishes sort of standing committees, ongoing committees, like the audit committee, but also um allows for the city council to create um official city committees. And then uh there's a section that has to do with the uh recognition of neighborhood uh groups and organizations. Um, in recent weeks, we've, I've come to you and talked to you about trying to get the city council, or sorry, the community council up and running again. Uh, we've talked about the Coalition um Against Violence, uh where we've recently uh, we're in the process of hiring a new coalition coordinator that will be responsible for that, as groups that we would like to make more official within the city system. Um, however, uh, right now, the only actual non-standing committee that we have is the Harvest Days Committee. And um, and in looking at the uh how we formed that, there's probably a couple of things that are maybe a little bit of conflict with code. Um, and part of that has to do with the fact that right now, section two-point-two-four says that when you form a committee, it has to follow some fairly rigid standards. So for example, it sets out what the term needs to be, how many years people could be on there, um, what uh day of the year they have to be, uh, uh, their would have to, their term ends and they'd have to start their new term, um, among other things. And so the thought is that maybe what we should do as we look at reconstituting the community councils and some of these other groups, is that we would take out some of those um formal standard um elements that are in the code, uh, remove those, and then just make it so that the city council by resolution can create a new committee. Now that resolution would essentially be the bylaws of the new organization and would go through and establish all of those kinds of things that are already sort of rigidly in code, but would allow for some variance. So for an example of that, in one area where we probably have a little bit of conflict right now, is that the Harvest Days Committee, we uh chair, we try to get reappointed uh soon after Harvest Days is done, so that they can start for the next year, whereas under the current, um, where the current ordinance is written, we'd have to wait until December to do it and there's some stuff like that. So um, that's kind of the goal, is that we would make it more flexible by just allowing you to set it up by resolution. And then of course, the other thing to keep in mind is that based on the nature of what that committee is going to do, will determine what laws are gonna affect that. So for example, if you want this committee to make decisions with regards to the allocation of resources in some way, or um uh do more than just be advisement, advisory? Yeah, I like that better. Um, then there would be maybe need for them to keep minutes, uh, post their agendas and that kind of thing, but if it's say, something that's a little bit more uh loosely organized, uh, or I shouldn't say loosely organized, something that uh is maybe just falls in the category of an advisory group or maybe a volunteer group or something like that, um, that might not have the same standards under state law for um them to do reporting and minutes and all that. So that's the first suggestion, is that we just make that simpler so that you can approve it by resolution. The second thing is that um right now, there's a section um of the code that refers to uh the recognition of community uh organizations. And we actually were trying to figure out exactly why that was established and we believe, though we are not certain, that this was intended to be um something to provide some support to the community council at some point. Now, the issue here is that it both tries to provide rigid guidelines and allow for autonomy of the organization, while at the same time providing for the city to provide a limited amount of indemnification um for the group. So it seems to fail on all regards because it increases our liability for an organization that is independent, um, while at the same time um requiring them to have sort of rigid standard, rigid standards on how they keep minutes and report and all that kind of stuff. And so our recommendation is that we actually just eliminate that. Um, it would still allow you to, if we did both of these, when we decide the exact form of what that community council should look like, you can approve that by resolution, it can be a formal group as part of the city, or if a community council decides to form and be totally separate, if, I mean, if that's what some group wants to do, then they could just be separate. And if they wanna interact with us, have a relationship, we can uh formalize that arrangement through an agreement or something, if that's what's needed. So um, all in all, um, what the uh, the proposal is then, is that we look at the section with the committees, we make one section simplified by removing the rigid standards and allow you to um make a resolution to create the committee based on your needs. And then the second part is we remove the section that we've never really actually used, uh, related to these, recognizing these community organizations. And uh with that, it should allow us to move into some of these other things that we've been discussing in the past a little bit easier with some of these other groups we want to formalize. So with that, is there any questions, comments, or concerns? And it's just a discussion item.
I know this must have taken quite a bit of work, a lot of research and hours into that, so thank you for doing that and to your, the team who helped you with that as well, because just reading over it, like my eyes crossed a few times, I'm like, wait what? So thank you. Hopefully we adopt these measures that'll make it a little bit easier for everyone moving forward.
Yeah, we'll uh endeavor to come back on the fourteenth of November, which is our next meeting, um, with uh, with the ordinance for you to approve.
That sounds good.
Cool, great, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, so we do have a closed session, however, um, in talking with city manager Doll earlier, um, we thought it would be best at this point to temporarily adjourn our city council meeting, go into the RDA meeting and get that out of the way and then come back for the closed session.
But we formally are recessed, is that, if we please don't adjourn?
We will, I did say temporarily adjourn, so I don't know if that's the same or not, but we will recess, um, but it will take a motion from one of the two council members at, to my left.
I, I move that we suspend our current council meeting and go into the RDA meeting.
Recession.
Recession.
Okay, motion and a second, is this a roll call?
No.
No, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Haven't had recess since elementary school. Decided.
Can we go outside and play?